I know, I know.
Is she the one just?
No. Yes, that's right.
Two minutes.
Mm-hmm. Stay. Do you mind doing the invocation?
What?
Do you mind doing the invocation?
Me?
I was just making sure.
Me?
I know. You look scared.
Yeah, man, I'm always gonna bring you down on the situation.
Okay. I was making sure. Welcome and good evening. It's exactly five o'clock this evening. We have a full forum. I'd like to bring this meeting to order, and I'd also like to make sure that all of your phones are on vibrate or silent so that we do not get disturbed. With that, we will kick off this evening with an invocation by Councilman Donaldson and then Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, everybody, and I mean everybody, goes through storms in life, Lord. And I thank you, Lord, that at one point or another, we get on the other side and things are set right. Father, I just thank you, Lord, that you watch over and guide us tonight. Father, give us wisdom and knowledge, Father, in Jesus's name, amen.
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 Now the America flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag?
I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We received some speaker request form, and I also received an email today that came in at 2:30, so that will be first. And then Philip LaFevre, you will be on deck, then Michael Ciascio, and then Hillary Dumas. So. Dear Mayor, countryman, I'm writing this statement explaining my decision to leave employment with the city of Montgomery, Texas for the record. On Monday, July 29, 2024, at approximately 5:00 PM, I was having a conversation with Mary Ann Carl in her office. Gary Palmer was on his way past her office on his way out, and I remember needing to ask him a question. While he and I were speaking, I noticed that he had a USMC, United States Marine Corps, tattoo on his arm. I said, "That's cute, Gary." He said, "Yeah, you wish you had one." I said, "No, I think I'm okay," and they laughed, and he then abruptly left. I arrived to work the next morning, July 30, 2024, at approximately 8:00 AM. Palmer was parked in the parking spot that I typically park in. That was unusual for two reasons. One, he typically parks in the gravel lot behind the row of police officers and the police vehicles, and two, I rarely ever saw him in the office prior to 10:00 AM. When I went to my office, I found a sticky note on my door that said, "Come see me, GP." When I went to his office, he told me to close the door and have a seat. I asked him, "What's up?" And he told me, "I'm not your fucking buddy, and I'm not your fucking friend." He went on to explain, "I was unprofessional, and it was not okay for me to act like that, especially around his subordinates," referring to Patricia Capazano, who was in our office adjacent to us. He then lectured me for a while and told me that I was still in my probationary period and asked what I had to say. I apologized to him and said that it would not happen again. He then went on for a while again about the same topic and again asked me what I had to say. I told him, "I've already said it, Gary, it won't happen again." He then released me to go back to work. I went back to my office. I reflected on the incident for a while and ended up taking an early lunch. I called my wife and discussed with her what happened, and she and I both agreed it was not a healthy work environment. My specific reasoning behind the decision to leave are as follows. One, I'm an Army veteran of nine years. I've never interacted with another serviceman either on active duty or my service and bantered about, I have, I've interacted, sorry, I have interacted with another service member either during active duty or after my service and bantered about the other branches of service. When I met Gary for the first time in my interview for the city council position, city secretary position, he noted that I was a veteran and that he had served in the Marine Corps. I told him then and there that nobody is perfect, to which he laughed. I will continue to banter with those other branches of service regardless of their position as either a subordinate or superior of mine. This is an important and well-known part of the camaraderie between the branches of service, whether active duty or not. I could understand being upset if I was criticizing his actions as a city administrator. However, this was clearly not the case. Two, the way Gary handled this entire situation was, at minimum, unprofessional. First, I believe that he purposely parked in the spot that I usually parked in to send some kind of message of intimidation and power. Second, the way he spoke to me was uncalled for and unnecessary. His behavior was weird and unsettling, and I felt that it was an indication of how his behavior would continue during my employment, something I am clearly not interested in dealing with. Three, I've never in my working career, 27 years, had a supervisor threaten my job. I found it interesting that he even communicated that to me, as he actually does not have the authority to fire the city secretary. With that being said, the city has much more invested in the city administrator than the city secretary, and I am not interested in working for the toxic environment that he was creating and the potential of him influencing council members. When I returned from lunch, I went to Palmer's office and explained pretty much what I had written here. He asked me if I was gonna give him notice, and I told him that I was not. I told him that probationary periods work both ways, and I had decided that it was my best interest to leave immediately. He told me that if I changed my mind, he'll let him know. I left the city of Madisonville with the intention of gaining experience in the role of Director of Administrative Services, as well as continuation of my experience as the secretary. In my case, I took a major risk in leaving the city of Madisonville. I left my job that was secure, as well as short 15-minute commute from my home. Up to that day, I had zero intentions of leaving the city of Montgomery. Had the environment been different, I would likely still be in the role. Whatever the cost to me personally or professionally, I will not work for or around Gary Palmer. Mayor, thank you for your confidence and opportunity to serve the city of Montgomery, no matter how briefly. I'm happy to know you, the council, and the staff at the city. I continue to believe the city of Montgomery has a very bright future, and I look forward to hearing great news about its growth. Sincerely, James Green. Next up is Philip LaFevre.
Hold on. Time out. So, what time did you get that email?
I'll throw this here. I can show it to you. You sent that today, oh, 1:30, 2:30?
So there was one sent to you also at 1:50.
From whom? Oh, from Megan Tuttle, yes. I took that as her, that she wanted as-
Oh, it said it's over her three minutes.
Okay, and I have no problem reading it. So, yeah, we'll go ahead and do that. Actually, she sent it to all of us that thought it was her three minutes here. Dear Mayor and council members, as much as I would like to be at the council meeting tonight due to my work schedule, I don't think I will be able to attend. However, I thought it was important to share my thoughts with you all regarding some of the agenda topics. Let me start by mentioning, I have watched every city council meeting since the start, since the city started streaming the meetings four-plus years ago. I've watched as the people in the council seats have changed. I have followed along in the agenda packet as items had been discussed and researched, ordinances to be, to get the full picture of what the city standards are. After many years of watching, I'm disheartened by the fact that we don't seem to be making really any progress. It seems like these meetings keep circling around the same topics over and over again. We are wasting time and effort on trivial issues instead of focusing on topics that really matter. I have seen in multiple meetings, council target staff for what seemed to be personal aim or retaliation for a staff member having a differing opinion. We have been down this road before with the Assistant City Administrator. I watched it play out. I don't think it is wise to go down this road again, and I don't think there's another person who has a much knowledgeable and who has a much knowledge and history about the city of Montgomery as Mr. McCorkidale. In regard to the city administrator position, you have already voted not to renew his contract. Terminating immediately does nothing but leave a gap for other members to try to fill in and cost the city additional money, roughly $19,000 if my calculation, calculations are correct, not to mention we barely even gotten the city secretary's spot filled. If you terminate the city administrator, Assistant City Admin, sorry, if you terminate the city administrator and Assistant City Admin, are each of you planning on coming up here to train the new city secretary? Question mark. Before you go into the meeting tonight, I challenge each of you to reflect and think, why did I want to join city council? What did I intend to accomplish by holding this position? And then flash forward to current day and think, am I accomplishing what I set out to do? What does my resume of accomplishments look like while I've been on council? Are my actions based on personal feelings towards individuals and/or discussion topics, or are they really in the best interest of the community? Final unrelated thought, why haven't we appointed a fifth council member after six months? We are asking for trouble by not having someone in that fifth spot and relying on the mayor to be the tiebreaker should we need one. I feel this should be a priority topic. I appreciate you all taking the time to read this, and I truly thank you for the time and dedication you're putting into the city. I recognize this is not an easy position to hold, and I applaud you all. This email needs no response, consider it my public forum comment, although I'm surely over my three-minute limit. Thank you all, take care, Melvin Tuttle.
Thank you.
Sure. Nope. All right, Mr. LaFevre? I'm up and state your name for the record, please.
Good evening. Philip LaFevre, 19971 FM 2854. This whole fracas basically started over private versus public roads. And I think it's important that people realize that you cannot have a public road that then goes private, but you can have a private road that goes public so long as it's being built properly to standards and to the city ordinances. In this case, the homeowners, and I think this is, the homeowners are the ones that should be given the consideration on this, wanted to have the roads go public again. Personally, I'd keep them private because you can lock the gates, you can keep bad people out, and generally, in the long run, to me, homes in private roads are worth more money. But it's their choice, and they wanted to do it, and I respect that. So, these roads were built with that opportunity in mind, and it's taken the homeowners almost a year, if I'm not mistaken, to get any support from the city. The city should have known, did know, that these roads were done properly. Mr. McCorkidale was on city council, signed off on two of these subdivisions being passed. He was in meetings with us. We had disputed engineering invoices from Jones and Carter. He was in meetings with us when we went over those with Jones and Carter and actually got refunds for ourselves and the city. Mr. Rosnoffsky was with Jones and Carter. He was in meetings. He knew that these roads had been inspected and checked. There's not much you can say when all of a sudden you get a full court press and four city people come up and basically say, "Substandard, not to, not to grade, don't take them over." That's basically saying, you're in an inferior location, your houses are worth less, and we, the city, aren't gonna help you, when the reality was, when you look at all the facts, they knew that the city roads, the roads have been inspected, they kept quiet, they basically, and you look at the tape, they basically tried to misinform council. They knew, Mr. Finke had already shown that the roads had tested, the concrete had been tested, and actually, the test brakes were much stronger than they needed to be. They basically almost kept that from council. It was only at the last minute that that was produced, and their whole intention was for council to refute, take their advice and refuse to accept the roads, and that would accord a big fuss. I think it was a big shock to them because it's normal for councils to accept the advice of staff. That's what they're paid to do, and it's not a rubber stamp, but generally, if you have employees and they're qualified, you trust them. And it's really rare, and it's a credit to council, that council, having also received those concrete tests, elected not to take their advice and elected to have the roads come back into the city. Council was basically, I'm not gonna, council was basically looking after the city people, the people who worked for the city were ignoring them. So when you come down to it, and I'll finish quickly, you've got the tapes, and you've got the maligning, the homes and the people and the, basically, how they live. You've now got, Hillary has already read all, many of the emails. She's gonna read you some more tonight. And then you have basically a situation where they have created something that is very unfortunate, and to me, the worst thing and the most unforgivable thing is they were using homeowners to basically get at us and/or to get at the city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Mr. Ciascio, and then Ms. Hillary Dumas.
Hello, it's Michael Ciascio, 138 Anna Springs, Miami, here in Montgomery, God bless Texas. Okay, the agenda tells us city council is here to rule on the careers of two civic city administrators, one of whom risked his life, risked his life to protect us, who's an honorably discharged United States Army veteran. Dave, Dave, thank you for your service to our nation. I salute you. Before we focus on the city administrators, the ones that are being looked at, let's turn that lens and focus on the city council. Let's take a deeper look. Let's talk about personal bankruptcy. Is there a member on city council going, currently going through bankruptcy? Has the city council shared that bankruptcy with the voters? My whole thrust is gonna be not something like the bankruptcy, but was it shared through the voters so the Texas voter walks into the booth knowledgeable? If one cannot manage what's finances, how or why can one be trusted to manage a private municipality? Carol, Casey, Cheryl, Stan, did you communicate the city council members' personal bankruptcy to the voters? The bad judgment on city council that never makes it to the voting? Driving while intoxicated, and I've done it. I've done it, and I was not arrested. You know why? I got behind the wheel, I was scared to death, drove real slow, followed people. So you gotta make two mistakes. You gotta first be foolish enough to drink too much, and then you gotta get in the car and create another crime. Driving while intoxicated. If there are city council members with a DWI conviction, has the city council communicated? And that's it. Not so much that the DWI happened, but was it communicated to the voters? Communicated that the DWI conviction to voters, Carol, Casey, Cheryl, Stan, did you communicate the DWI to the voters so when they walk into the booth, they know who and what they are voting for? Pedophile endorsements. Has any sitting Montgomery city council member received multiple endorsements from Mark Wayne Shorten, 63, of Spandora, who was found guilty of continuous sexual abuse of a child under the age of 14? Carol, Casey, Cheryl, Stan, did you communicate those endorsements to the voters? Again, the fact that somebody endorsed invited, not my point, not the big deal. Was the voting publicly informed so they can walk into the booth and hold the letter? They knew what they were doing. Summary, bankrupt law in a lucrative space, software engineering, software sales. Think about that. Bank and information technology today's day and age. DWI, shouldn't put at risk, the voters never know. Endorsed by a child predator, voters never know. Carol, Casey, Cheryl, Stan, if you don't fix it, I will. Dave, thanks again for your service for our nation.
Thank you.
Next up, Hillary Dumas.
Good evening. Hillary Dumas, 8560 Majestic Lake Court. Good evening, I'm back. After last week's public comment, I went home and I finished watching the city council meeting at home on video. The video is really glitchy, by the way, so I hope that in the future we can fix that. But after the meeting adjourned, video's still running, Mr. McCorkidale was speaking to Councilman Casey Olson, and although the audio is bad, it's clear he's still implying and backing up staff that our information was incorrect in defending city actions. So tonight, I'm going to give you the facts, not from me, not from the city staff, from Jones and Carter and invoicing directly. Here is a copy of the invoices from Jones and Carter, line by line, for Section 2 of Lake Creek Village. I have the same for Section 3 if you'd like. And if you look at the tab pieces. If you look at the tab pieces, you can. First one, we've talked about, city was involved in meetings in pre-construction. But if you go to page seven, you will, if you start, page four talks about, we are billed for plan review, email about private streets, private drainage. Okay, I mean, doesn't necessarily mean that much. Go to page seven, I'm sorry, six, we're billed for a call from Roan R.A. paving, a call from Troy Toland, who was our engineer at the time, vinyl inspection and paving. Page seven, we are billed multiple times, rebar inspection, site visit, 1:00 AM concrete pour, rebar inspection, concrete pour finishing rebar inspection, filling behind back of curb. If you continue on to page eight, you'll see that it continues. Introduction to site inspection of road, discussion concerning pavement, scheduled pavement inspection, review of paving areas. So you can see throughout this document, the $13,000 that we paid Jones and Carter for Section 2 alone, there are numerous instances, and it is very clear that they were involved at each step of the way. This was not done in secret, this was not done without city knowledge, this was done hand in hand. The last thing you'll see is another email, because I'm sure you enjoyed my highlights last week, but an email from our contractor to Jones and Carter, Lake Creek Village, Section 2, concrete paving, pass will be out there for inspection. So I hope that this puts an end, and without beating a dead horse, everybody can clearly see that these were done with the city, that everything done in the city requires permitting, inspection, testing, and oversight. A private house requires a soil test for a slab, the same with the roads. Even though the roads were platted as private, they still require the same testing, same inspection, same process. And if you look at the cover of that, you will see, highlighted at the top, client manager, Ed Shackleford, project manager, Chris Rosnoffsky. To be transparent, unlike city staff was about this project or us, Chris Rosnoffsky was not the engineer at the time, it was Glenn Fleming. This printout was done after the fact, so Chris never should have been commenting or stating with fact that he was specifically told not to inspect the roads because quite clearly the facts show otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the first item on your agenda, consideration of possible action on a formal contract between the city administrator and the city of Montgomery. Go ahead, I didn't realize you were gonna speak, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Gary Palmer, city administrator, the person subject to your actions for this agenda tonight. So in three days, in a matter of three days, we went from, "Do you plan to move your family to Texas," devoting not to renew my contract, to now attempting to terminate me for cause. No notice, no discussion, means. In the 20 months I've been your city administrator, I've had numerous conversations with each of you. None of them were negative or unproductive conversations. No unsolvable issues ever came up, and I've done my best to meet your expectations. My perception of our work was that we're getting stuff done, tracking positively on identified priorities, so I was blindsided without notice, per explanation, my employment contract was put on for the Tuesday, November 12, agenda for discussion, that was this past Tuesday. When the idea came up for discussion at Tuesday's meeting, the only question I received was a personal one, not one related to my job. "Are you planning to move your family to Texas?" I answered honestly, I told you I didn't know, and that was the truth. Without any further discussion or notice to me, five minutes later, when we were back at the regular meeting, the motion was made to not renew the city administrator's contract, which passed, again, without any discussion. This was a formal and binding decision by the city council. After that motion passed, I asked the council about the notice requirement, my last day with the city, and the severance payout, in which the mayor and council member responded in the affirmative. The city attorney also asked about the contract provisions in which he was told to follow the contract. It was also stated that no one had a copy of my contract, even though it was on the agenda for discussion. This was Tuesday evening, November 12, 2024, at around 7:30 PM, and you can view it and hear it on the meeting video. After the meeting, at around 9:00 PM, that same evening, I and the city attorney received an email from the mayor requesting to add my contract again to an agenda, add the termination of the Assistant City Administrator to the agenda, and then add the appointment of an interim city administrator. Two days later, still hearing nothing from anybody, I had to track down the city attorney who informed me the city council's not wanting to terminate me for cause. This was Thursday, two days after the meeting, maybe a day and a half. So it appears to me that council didn't like the "I don't know" response I gave when I asked if I was gonna move my family to Texas. It also seems to me the immediate decision to not renew my contract last Tuesday was either pre-planned or an arbitrary and capricious decision. I don't believe the council understood that the city voting not to renew my contract would kick in the severance requirement. After the meeting, when you realized this, you came up with a plan to just roll back in the agenda tonight and do it again, but this time add it for cause, which gets you out of paying, having to pay the severance. And why not? Puts the burden on me to now have to sue the city, which will then take it out of your hands, put it in the hands of the Texas municipal leagues, and this relieves you all from owning your actions and admitting to any mistakes, and any settlement will likely be paid by the Texas municipal league. And who cares if it ruins my name and reputation and process? Who cares if it damages me and my family financially? Who cares? It's not your money, it's city money. So you already voted not to renew my contract on Tuesday. You can't arbitrarily change your mind because you didn't understand the impact of your decision. I wasn't provided any reason or notice for the cause. Our contract specifically defines the reasons you can terminate me for cause. If I acted in any way that reached the level of cause as defined in our contract, I should have been immediately suspended pending investigation. Yet here I am. This toxicity at the leadership level spreads like a virus throughout your organization. What do you think your actions are doing to the psychology of your employees, your city workers? Watching your city council arbitrarily dismiss the city administrator on a whim, who has a contract? They don't. How do you think they believe they're gonna be treated? It's telling them either bow and kiss the ring, or you get tossed out. It'll turn your organization into survivor. Your city services will tank, you'll lose the confidence of your community, and it's a downward spiral from there. What do you think your next city administrator's gonna be like, knowing he or she has to try to manage while taking grenades with their back against the wall? Are you gonna honor their contract? What business is gonna want to come to the city of Montgomery and plant roots when they see this kind of venomous conflict going on in the city in which they plan to invest? What outside of agency is ever gonna respect and take a city seriously that's behaving like this? I took this job and moved out here based on our contract. I made sacrifices and rearranged my life and the life of my family based on our contract. I made many life-altering decisions based on our contract. I would not have accepted the job and moved here had the city not agreed to the terms of that contract. I helped uphold my end of the agreement, I honored the contract, be honorable people, and do the same. I've had no performance issues, you have no cause, I've done nothing wrong, and you all know. I have owed six months, nine months of salary in accord to our contract. If it's not paid out, I retain legal counsel and immediately intend on suing the city for breach. So I'm not going anywhere. Thank you.
So, Gary.
Would I use your phone?
I wasn't gonna ask you one. I was gonna agree with you 100% because here's my problem. We've had many conversations about your contract. I helped write, I helped Caleb write that contract, and went back and forth lots and lots, so I'm very well aware of what's in it. And I also agree 100% that I'm not gonna let an ego or emotional decision damage- my reputation, and we shouldn't allow it to damage the City of Montgomery's reputation. If we sign a contract with someone, that contract, and if you haven't read it, you need to read it again, it states exactly what cause it's for. We did none of those things to provide him those causes. I tried to tell you, you all argued with me numerous occasions, there is no cause, he has done everything we asked him to do. End of story. We follow a contract, when I put my name on the line, I'm going to honor that. End of story. And if anybody here thinks their ego is better than their word, you need to go somewhere else. Resign. Do something else.
You helped, you helped Arthur that contract?
You bet. Back and forth, Caleb, I'm going to go back and forth, not different calls to that contract.
I was not aware of that.
Back and forth, to make sure that we got certain things that were left out of the last contract captured. So when it comes to my integrity, the integrity of this town, if we make an agreement with someone, we damn well better uphold it. To sit back and say, oh, well, we don't want to pay it because we don't like this person, I'm sorry, that's bullshit.
But you're wrong, Casey.
No, I'm not wrong. That contract is ironclad, and we did nothing to inform him of anything.
I like Gary.
I'm just very, very disappointed that this is even on this agenda. And if Alan was here, he would see, he could read my text messages when I said this is total bullshit, Alan, it shouldn't be on the agenda.
Alan told me today, I agree with the best result for the City, and that's, this is the best result. There's two reasons why the contract was breached, and I guess we talked about that in court. But he told me, actually, there's a number of reasons, but he said two for sure. One under item two and the addendum. That's all I'll say.
Well, you know, I'm going to speak up for myself. I have no ego involved in this situation, I have no interest in it, either financially or otherwise. I'm just trying to do the right thing for the City. And sometimes it's a blurry picture of what we have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. I don't, just like Gary said in an email to us, he doesn't have any personal, anything against anybody on staff, I mean, on council. But, and by the same token, we don't, at least me personally, this is not an issue of emotion, it's not an issue of trying to get at somebody, get back at somebody, I have no ulterior motive. I just want the City to move forward, I want it to move functionally, and there is a lot of other instances involved, which we can't really discuss right now, because I don't, this isn't a forum to bring out dirty trash. This is a forum to do business, and if we see that we, the direction that the leadership is going is not in our best interest, then we have a right to say, no, it's got to turn and go another way. And there's a lot of undercurrent, I know from, from the time that I got here to now, and the time that I've observed the Council, there's a lot of bickering, a lot of personal animosity, and a lot of hate, that we can't have that. At some point in time, we've got to find a way to find medium ground, we have to learn to respect each other's opinion, we have to learn to forgive, and people don't seem want to do, want to do that. They want to take it to the next level, and this is the next level. I am sorry, it doesn't look good, it's going to look ugly. That's the way it goes down, when things aren't going right, when you're disrespected, which I can't go into, but this Council has been disrespected by the City, things have been going on undercover, without us knowing it, and if we hadn't brought it to light through this procedure, we would never know about it. Because there was a gag order on us, and that's the way it is. You know, if you're going to elect us, then you're going to respect us and let us make our own opinion and own decisions. We're not here to play games, I'm not here to play games. You know, I, you know, I'm sorry, we've got to take action in what we perceive is the best interest of the City. I love Dave, I love Dave, I love his service, he's a good man, but he crossed the line, and we cannot have people that cross the line get away with it. You know, people have to be punished when they do something out of the ordinary and make extenuating steps to make a personal attack on somebody. We can't have that. I don't care what anybody says, right is right and wrong is wrong. There is a right way to do things and a wrong way, and nobody seems to want to do the right way. So I'm sorry, you know, that we have to do it this way. I hate him, I don't like, I don't like it either. I don't like it any more than Gary does, you know, it's just, we got, we got to find somewhere, way where we can get along. If it takes moving people out for whatever reason, then we're going to do it, I'm sorry, we're going to do it. I don't like the process, I wish we'd handled it better, I apologize to the people here and the people in the City. Yes, it's going to make us look bad, I can't help that, I can't help that. We've got to do what we feel is right, and, you know, there's all, there's two sides to every story, we have our side, and right now, it looks like we're going to stick with it.
Okay, since everybody's having this open conversation with Casey starting it, I do apologize also. I've lived here for 50 years, and I've never seen quite this much, but there has been things that have been breached, that I feel like I'm absolutely irreparable. But one of the things, and I do like Gary, but he sent on June the 5th, he sent Council a letter that says, I do not feel I'm successful in this City. And actually, I'm a grandmother, so I can say this, he was actually telling me my child was ugly, and I've lived here for 50 years, and I don't understand why he couldn't be successful, so I kind of brought it on for the fact that, at this point, if he wasn't successful, why were we spending so much money in the City? So maybe he just needed to reform, and that's why I do apologize myself, so I hope everyone understands.
I would like to make the comment, it's not open to, I commented on agenda item one, it was all about his contract, and that's all I talked about. It's not open discussion.
Let's move on, Karen. Let's make a motion. Carol, are you making a motion?
Make a motion. Make a motion to terminate the City Administrator for cause effective immediately.
It's a motion by Carol.
I second.
Seconded by Cheryl, that we, what did you say, sorry?
Terminate.
Terminate.
The City Administrator for cause effective immediately.
It has been moved and seconded, that we terminate the City Administrator's contract for cause immediately. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote, it's open for discussion.
So here's my question, if there, if this is a debate, somebody name the cause for
Well, I believe that there's going to be a lawsuit in, per Alan, he asked that we not state.
This is by cause.
Alan said not to discuss.
Well, here's the thing, this is what I don't understand. Ladies and gentlemen, this, this is what I don't understand, is that everyone here has been privy to Alan's comments on what to do with this, except for me. And I haven't missed an executive session, we were just in one.
You did.
Yeah, but he didn't talk about it then. You guys didn't talk about it then.
And you're always able to call the City Attorney.
But here's the thing, people, what happened outside of this building?
Called Alan.
So what are you saying, Casey?
Well, there's a whole lot of information that's not being shared, and everybody has it.
You have it.
He had it.
Go ahead and show it to me.
You've been on the emails.
No, I haven't. I've been on the email from you to Gary and back, but I have no information from Alan.
Well, I called Alan.
So how did you all get the information from Alan, to what to do, on whether or not we should name the cause? But, because if there's cause, I'd all sure like to hear what it is. Because this contract is very specific on what is cause.
Casey, you'll have the opportunity to vote.
I have the opportunity to vote, but this is a debate, somebody should give me some information so I know what to vote on.
Insubordination and dereliction of duties.
Okay, so insubordination is not called out for cause in his contract, word for word. You need to read his contract, it is not in there. Contracts are written for a reason and signed, it's not a suggestion, it is our guide, it's what we do by it. The contract does not say anything about insubordination, and I warned you guys that Like I said, you want to bring the City's reputation down because you don't want to honor a contract that we signed, that's on you, right? My integrity and the City's integrity, y'all are playing with it. Not just Gary's, you're messing with the City's integrity, you're messing with the other council members' integrity by not honoring a contract that we agreed to. It calls it, you can read it. I sent it to you in a text message, when you asked me, what are you talking about? I said, here's a picture of his contract.
Me?
Yes.
I have his contract.
Yeah. It's highlighted exactly what's for cause. Insubordination isn't one of them.
It says willful misrepresentation to the City, is what Alan stated, as well as material breach, is what he told me today, right before we got here.
Because that's the other thing this contract says, but we have to inform him.
Alan did not say that, he did not tell me that, but I don't make the motion.
It's in the contract.
Okay. I'm just telling you what Alan told me, I didn't, I'm just telling you what the man told me.
So if we're going to vote, let's vote, but just understand.
Let's vote.
The reputation, if you want to, if you want to throw it down the drain for that, that's on you.
All those in favor of terminating the City Administrator for cause, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will immediately terminate the City Administrator for cause. Item number two on your agenda, consideration of possible action terminating the current Assistant City Administrator, Director of Planning and Development.
I make a motion, that we, consideration of possible action to terminate the current City Administrator and Director of Planning and Development immediately.
It's been moved by Cheryl, that we terminate the current Assistant City Administrator, Director of Planning and zoning and development immediately.
Seconded.
Seconded by Stan. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote, it's open for discussion. All those in favor.
Can you take the public comment?
I'm sorry?
Can you take the public?
No, we weren't, it wasn't open to it. We didn't.
You're not going to let the public speak, Charles?
Yeah, but the public fills out a piece of paper that states.
No, no, not an agenda item, they don't.
Yeah, you do, yeah, you do. Yeah, you do, Casey, you sit there and say you want to do agenda item number three, and then they can, they can choose to do it beginning or during that item. Yes, that is, that is.
Now, when anybody talking to me half a day.
And every time.
I'm not, nobody's talking about half a day.
Come on, please, every time, we've had a person who's been involved in an agenda item, whether it's a developer or anybody else, we give them the opportunity to talk about it.
Yes, I usually said, if Dave would like to, that's fine, I.
So what I'm saying is, we did every single other.
I would like to get Gary Palmer to provide my comment.
Okay, all right. Just, it was not, yes, you may.
Gary Palmer, former City Administrator, made McCorkin's immediate supervisor since January 2023 till now. During that time, Mr. McCorkin's performed to high standard, reliable, knowledgeable about his job, outstanding team player and an asset to the City. I've had no disciplinary or performance issues with Mr. McCorkin. Also during my tenure, I observed Mr. McCorkin being publicly vilified over and over again by the same person for no reason. You all know who that person is, yet you have failed to address the issues. I do not understand why the personal attacks begins to continue, and why or how he's on tonight's agenda for termination.
All those in favor of terminating the current Assistant City Administrator, Director of Planning and Zoning, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, the motion carries, we will terminate the current Assistant City Administrator, Director of Planning and Zoning immediately, Planning and Development immediately. Item number three on your agenda, consideration of possible action on appointing an interim City Administrator.
Okay, so here's another one, do we have, do we have a candidate in mind?
Yes.
Okay, so when did that come about? Because I haven't heard, I haven't talked about this season.
Casey, people who are independent thinkers, if they knew that this was on the agenda, of course they're going to come with something.
The agenda was on three days ago.
Right, you've had 70 days, that's what it is.
Three days, we popped out a City Interim Manager in three days.
Oh, I didn't know about that.
Okay, we can't seem to do anything else around here in less than a month, so.
That's what was asked to be put on the agenda, Casey.
All I have to say is, there's a whole lot of very choreographed information, interim on the, on the agenda, I've never even heard, didn't even know we were going to talk about interim. My whole thought process is, we let Gary finish out, so now we're going to terminate him, can't do that, we can't let him finish out, so now we have to have an interim. So if we need, this has all been planned, ladies and gentlemen, and I have not been involved.
Casey, you have all these things, but you know what, you're the person that I've seen up here all the time.
But the evidence is right here, how does it happen so quickly?
I come to City Hall, and we do have council, but you seem to know that we are having some kind of conspiracy.
Let me, explain something to me, Carol, how is it that you all are informed of, hey, we got interim that we're going to vote on?
Wouldn't you want somebody in there, nobody, I don't know that we even will vote on one tonight, but you should want somebody at the helm if you don't have.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so that's, it's only natural to have this on here, maybe there's nobody to throw it in, maybe there is.
I think that before we try to vote somebody in, we should at least go out and reach out for one.
Sure, absolutely.
And do some interviews or something, this is action, this is not, let's talk about getting one.
You can choose to table it, you can choose to.
I'm just saying, folks, it looks, it looks very strange, from my point of view.
It looks natural, really.
I told you, the process stinks.
Okay, I've been asked to read it again, consideration of possible action on appointing an interim City Administrator.
Been appointed, Chief Solomon.
It has been moved to appoint Chief Solomon, and seconded by, moved by Stan, seconded by Cheryl. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote, it's open for discussion. All those in favor of appointing the interim City Administrator as Chief Solomon, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, those opposed, say nay. Did you vote, Casey? I didn't hear you.
I did, I voted in favor of Chief Solomon. I think Chief Solomon is a good man, I think he can do it. My problem is, is there's been no discussion, zero.
I agree.
No, it was not all thing. All those in favor of accepting, everybody said yes, sorry. The motion has, everything's been moved, and we will appoint an interim City Administrator as Chief Solomon. Number four on your agenda, consideration of possible action on an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the City of Montgomery, Texas, special election held on the 5th day of November 2024. Aye for, one, for the creation of the Montgomery Crime Control and Prevention District, and two, extending the term of office for mayor and council from two years to four years. I have the numbers, pardon me, I have my stack, so give me just a moment. By Susie Harvey, aye, Susie Harvey, Conroe Elections, County Elections Administrator, do hereby certify that the attached pages are the final results of the City of Montgomery Special Election held in Montgomery County on November 5th, 2024. For Prop A, which is the Crime, Crime Control and Prevention District, the numbers are 967 for, 391 against, that's a 72.45% turnout, and total ballots cast was 1,491. Next, City of Montgomery Proposition B, failed, totals for it were 581.